We're going to have another law for the favor of Christine Dodson and Christine Brown Dodson.
Do you solemnly swear, and we'll put your hand on the bicep. Christine Brown Dodson, do you solemnly swear?
I do.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina,
I do.
And laws and ordinances of Buncombe County, the town of Black Mountain, and I will abide by and enforce.
I will.
As may be appropriate to the duties of my position, that I will not be influenced in any matter in the account of personal bias or prejudiced.
I do.
And I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as law enforcement officer in the Black Mountain Police Department.
I do.
Congratulations, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to our board meeting this June 11th. And if you will, please stand for President Elijah Black.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have invocation, Mr. Jack Taylor.
If you would, would you bow your heads with me? Precious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. And we praise you and we thank you, Lord, that in a time of distress, in a time of rising floodwaters, no life was taken. We thank you, Lord, for men and women, the first responders that went out and served this community fearlessly to enable those that needed that help. I thank you, Lord, for our police force. That in a time when they are stressed more than any of us can imagine, that they faithfully serve this community. Lord God, we invite you here to be with these men and women as they make decisions for our community. That you would give them wisdom and discernment and that your grace will be evident in our lives. May this grace be shared with one another. And Lord, may we be thankful that we have this opportunity to be together. We lift this bird to you in Jesus' name, amen.
The announcements that I like to make is this town has been through quite an ordeal in the last couple of weeks. And as mayor and the rest of the board, we'd like to make a statement basically to our town staff thanking them for their work and their service to this town and the extra hours that they put in and the selflessness that they had in what they've done for this town. We've had several people have to work almost double shifts. People have been pouring their heart and soul out for this town because that's their job. But even though it's their job, they've done it out of the, their willingness to serve. And the mayor and the board would like to thank every, each and every individual that works for this town that worked during these past events. Here he is. We have a proclamation now for Mr. Kenny Katz. If you would stand up, come up, sir.
I'd like to proclaim today, June 11th, 2018, is Kenny Katz Day. Whereas it is fitting and proper to honor and pay tribute to the Black Mountain resident, Kenny Katz, who inspired so many with his run across the state of North Carolina on the mountain to sea trail from April 1st, 2018 to May 24th, 2018, finishing his 1,175 mile journey in just 54 days. Whereas Kenny Katz accomplished this run despite being diagnosed with incurable form of blood cancer, multiple myeloma. And whereas Kenny Katz used this run to raise money, awareness, and hope for others battling myeloma and other incurable cancers. Whereas Kenny Katz has started a nonprofit organization, Throwing Bones for a Cure, to encourage others to keep moving forward, no matter what obstacles they may face. And whereas Kenny Katz plans to work tirelessly through his nonprofit to provide much-needed emergency funds for individuals and families until their cancer treatment. And whereas Kenny's run is in dominant spirit and his great physical achievement in the face of staggering odds brought pride and joy to the citizens of Black Mountain. Now I therefore, I, John Collins, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, do hereby proclaim June 11th, 2018, in the town of Black Mountain, as Kenny Katz Day.
All right. Next is citizen comments. And remember, it's three minutes. Give your name and address, where you live. And the first person is Elaine Lotzenheimer.
No, that's a budget. I put on a budget.
Okay, yep. All right.
Terry McElrath, 218 Paget Town Road. I would like to take this time to publicly thank Casey Connor for his nearly 16 years of service to the town of Black Mountain. He served over eight years as a Recreation and Parks Director, which includes a few months as interim. During his tenure, he expanded the programs of the department to where it now serves over 83,000 recreational visits annually. And this does not include passive recreations such as the folks who walk around the lake, fish, or use the parks for soccer on a Sunday afternoon. He turned the Gray Eagle Arena in the Carver Community Center from facilities that operated at a financial loss to operating in the black. This included creating and implementing marketing plans for the arena and also a general marketing plan for the department. His guidance led to the Lakeview Center for Active Aging, receiving an award as a Senior Center of Excellence, not once, but twice. Casey developed the summer camp program, which in 2018, sold out all 221 available spots in three days. A clear indication of both his popularity and community need. He developed the popular bounce house and Nerf battle parties that brings in over $10,000 in revenue each year. He implemented new sports programs, including dodgeball, pickleball, and disc golf. He created the Black Mountain Swim Team, which now has over 130 participants. He created an environment for an award-winning community guard program, including promoting the community guard concept to other recreation departments throughout North Carolina when asked to present a seminar during the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association meeting. And this is just some of his many upfront accomplishments. The more behind-the-scenes accomplishments include developing standard operating guidelines for the department, which should help with continuity for the interim director and the new director. Wrote several grants for the new playground at Carver Center, which led to the town receiving a $40,000 playground at a cost of $6,000. He helped write the part of grant for Lake Tomahawk Park, including renovations to Lakeview Center and the new pool, and then assisted in the design and oversight of construction of the new pool. He oversaw the development of the online registration system in the department's website. Supervised renovations at the Carver Center. Many of the improvements improved energy efficiency and lowered the operating cost to the facility. Kept with the development of the town's comprehensive plan, updated the department's master plan, created a master plan for Lake Tomahawk Park, Veterans Park North, and was working with the team for the plan for Veterans Park South. And last but not least, led the department through the national accreditation process, needing 150, the required 150 national standards for excellence. There are only 165 accredited departments in the United States. The town of Black Mountain is the smallest department to ever achieve accreditation. To maintain this accreditation, the new director must be certified. And I conclude my saying, as a recreation professional myself, I'm saddened that the profession has lost a member of Casey's caliber. And I'm saddened that the political stress within this government led to his resignation. Thank you, Casey Connor, for a job well done.
All righty. Mr. Kim Latia.
Latta.
Latta. Kim Latta.
They may not speak in the budget hearing.
It's on the tennis courts? All righty. Communications from boards and commissions, Jamie. I think you'll come up and tell us and give us a statute report, please, sir.
Evening, mayor and board. On our state of emergency for the water system, I just wanted to do a report, sort of go from start to finish on what occurred during them events and sort of give the citizens. I know they have a lot of questions when this stuff happens. And I hope I got a lot of answers and can sort of go through in detail what goes on when that occurs. On May 29th, we monitor the new SCADA system, which I think everybody's aware of, which is a digital monitoring system for our water system that we didn't used to have, that provides a lot of information to our water system as tank levels, pressures, distribution, coming in, going out, things of that nature. And approximately around, on May 29th, bear with me because I took a lot of notes here. Was we was watching that system, we started losing water in, at 1:15 on May 30th, and it was in massive amounts of water, about around 576,000 gallons every 24 hours. But as the rate was dropping by the foot on the tanks, which is a 36-foot tank, we were losing approximately 20,833 gallons out of one tank and 36,000 gallons out of another because these two tanks, which we call the Hemphill Tank, which is our biggest tank, and the South Tank, which is our second biggest tank, they gravity feed off one another. So as one drops, it's feeding the other one, which is causing it to drop. So the good thing about it is, because we got this system, we was able to calculate how much water we're losing. Well, the 576,000 gallons every 24 hours, our wells only produce around 500,000 gallons every 24 hours. So we were losing more than we could produce by ourselves. In this same event, this flood event, we were contacted by Asheville, which we have an interconnection with them. And by 24% of our water approximately from them, the third main feeder line that feeds us was out of commission also. So then it really became a state of emergency, and we were continuing to lose water. So during this time, as protocol, we have to send out a Code Red to let the citizens know, you know, that we have a boil water advisory. But before we do that, I had to contact Kimberly Barnett. She's with the Division Environmental Quality, which does inspections for our water system. She then in turn takes notes, lets the proper people know on her side of everything, and then tells us about the Code Red. Well, I know there's a lot of questions about a boil water advisory, what that means. That is basically a protocol that we have to do and everybody with potable drinking water has to do, that just is basically a precaution, saying that there is a small percentage of contamination that could be in the system. It's not saying that it is. It's just being, it's just a safe precaution for the citizens and everybody within that water system. It's totally different from a boil water notice. A boil water notice is pretty much saying it's contaminated. But an advisory is just a precautionary period. And at that point, we start watching water pressures because that controls everything. If the water pressure in the whole system starts dropping, the increase of contamination goes up. We never got to that point, not even close. So there were no worries there. But like I say, it's just a precautionary, it's part of the protocol. The next protocol is to contact Jerry Behan with Emergency Management, which we done, and which Jerry had been out all night the night before and did not know. So we contacted RCC, which is a western region. And basically, it's who Emergency Management goes through to put people in the right place if we get into an emergency situation and need stuff like bottled water, equipment, anything of that nature. So all three of them was contacted. Within this event, from the time it started to it ended, Buncombe County Schools was contacted, fire police was contacted because of low water pressure for, you know, for fire and stuff like, of that nature. And the police department was notified to try to help us find these leaks. And the problem with finding these leaks is during the floods, we have a lot of creek and river crossings. So next thing we do is go into action and start cutting off valves and try to isolate these sections to see if the tanks will start filling. And if they do in these isolated sections, the tanks will come up. Well, during that process, we cut off a couple of valves in the south end of town, and the tank did come up. But then it rapidly started going back down. So we think that was just a spike in pressure from killing that one section. By watching the SCADA system, if you'll look at this chart up here, and I wish I had a pointer because it's really hard to see from back there, I know. But you'll see, the tank was on 30 foot on May 30th, down at the bottom. The left-hand side is the feet of the tank down to the bottom of the day. You see how it rapidly started going down? And then if you look down at the bottom, it got down to around about eight feet. This is the Hemphill Tank, our biggest tank. The 750,000 gallon tank, the South Tank, was dry at that point. There was no water in it. So we worked overnight, did not go home. And there was somebody here through this whole process trying to figure this out. During that time, Asheville, in their leak, was trying to find a way to provide their customers water and was keeping us in mind of our situation. Their engineers and their team designed a way to get their people back in water. But in the meantime, they made a temporary connection to give us water. And which in turn, we was pumping at night, and we were getting about 100,000 gallons a night from them. So that really helped, even though we were still losing it. It kept our system in water through this process. So I really want to thank them for that. And they have got their leak fixed today. They do have a boil water advisory. It does not affect us because we're not buying water from them tonight. So it's an 18-hour turnaround for a back T sample at the lab. They do their stuff in-house, and that's something else I want to thank them for. They done our samples in-house and kept us from having to go through our lab, which saved us time in 18 hours we had them back. So sometime tomorrow, if the samples come back good, we can go back to normal, buying the normal amount of water that we buy from them, which is around 180,000 gallons sometimes in 24 hours. If you'll see at the lowest point, that's as low as it got. That is where the leak was fixed. And it was fixed at 1:00 PM on June 2nd, the leak was fixed. And then you can see it start to rise and peak up. And that's how fast it started going up, and the tank started to fill. So in 24 hours, the South Tank was full. The biggest tank is hanging at about 27 feet. And that, they're both full, they're both in normal operation. But when we get back online with Asheville, with the regular amount of water we can buy, the big tank will go on up into 30-some feet, and we're back to normal. But with that being said, the outpouring of outreach that we got from people trying to help us, several representatives from MSD called, offering equipment, grading, whatever we need. North Carolina Rural Water come out, and they had some high-tech sound equipment. They offered their time and two people for free, didn't cost a penny. Montry employees, prior employees with the town, Leslie Carrero, Bill Hart with Asheville. Like I say, I can't thank them enough for what they've done for our back Ts and thinking about us and trying to get that connection. And just citizens in general, I know our mayor, he stayed, he stayed on board the whole time and actually come out while we were fixing the leak. That way, he could give proper information of what was going on. All the times documented, I want to thank the other departments for their help. They really stuck their necks out and helped us during this time. And we tried to return the favor to them with what manpower we had. But I just want to thank the guys and the gals in my department for their time and effort. And they really done a great job of keeping everybody in water. And I want to thank the citizens of this town for the understanding because I know when things like that happen, it's trying times. But I will say that, speaking for this department, that the people that work in it, you're in good hands. And they're very skilled, and I can't thank them enough. And that's about it, unless anybody's got any questions about the water system. The SCADA system is, I will say this about it, if we would not have had this system, this town would have been without water before we would have known it. Because we have no other way of knowing. We have no way to, we had no way to monitor. And we would have been getting calls saying, hey, I'm without water. Were there some people that lost water, there was. But it was very minimal impact to what the whole town could have been without, the whole south side of town could have been without water through this whole event, which would have created a whole nother set of issues. So I'm very thankful that the board backed us on letting us install this SCADA system. And I think this one event right here is well for, paid for itself. So that's all I have.
It may be worth saying, because of the public attention on water and the numbers that you provided with what we use a day and our capacity and so forth, that we are, it could be next month or it could be August, planning on entering, amending actually, our water agreement with the city of Asheville. And that's got a couple of components. The Avon Business Expansion gives us some reason to do that. But we're also planning in that water purchase agreement to, that's really our source of water. And as you probably know, the Asheville watershed is, has a very abundant supply. And we have not drilled a productive well in over 20 years. And so that, we have the pieces in place to, for Asheville water to be our future source, that's in addition to what we produce. But it's, I think it's a good, it's a good time to point that out to the crowd that's here tonight and to, you know, to the folks who might be, it's good information to get out to the community. Because we are, you know, there are days and times even now when our water supply has a bit of stress on it. We're buying, as Jamie said, 180,000 a max, at maximum times. But we'll be, we'll be moving more toward, we're not quite certain, but more in the neighborhood of 450, up to 750 is kind of the cap that we think. And that's a 30-year solution is what we're looking at.
And I will say, and I did miss this point, I meant to mention it, that when we found the leak in these situations, we, we know how much water we're losing, and we know what we're trying to find. But until these rivers go down because of the creek crossings, we have no way of knowing because it just blends in with the river. And so when the river went down, that's when we found it underneath a bridge on Black Mountain Avenue. And it was a, it was a two-inch line with a direct tap to a six-inch line, which makes a big difference when you got 150 PSI pressure on it. And that's the amount of water we were losing. So that being said, Alderman Harris brings up a good point. If that would have been a six-inch running full force, then that's a whole different story. So that interconnection with Asheville will help offset that. If that ever happens because of the amount of water we can push, if we was hooked up to them already, we would have never got as low as we did because we'd be pushing more water in than what's going out. So it's really going to be good if we get bigger leaks in the future to offset that with that interconnection from Asheville.
Thank you, Jamie. Now we move on to our consent agenda, Justin?
There are a few items on the consent agenda. A being several, several sets of minutes. And you can see those dates that are printed on the agenda there. It's also a resolution to authorize staff to be able to apply for grants that don't require local matching funds. Reason for this is that just eases the process. A lot of times, staff will get these notices, and there's a quick turnaround to get an application in. And if it has to wait for formal action, sometimes you miss those deadlines. Obviously, the board will be informed of these. And again, this is for grants that wouldn't require any, any local match. And then there's two items, C and D, two budget amendments for the current fiscal year's budget. One, as you can see, is money in and money out, basically for a fire truck, an insurance settlement with some damage that was done. And what this is doing is recording that expense and then recording the settlement, the funds that were received from the insurance company to deal with that. And then the second one is transferring funds to the Capital Reserve Fund from Capital Outlay. These are for the automated water meters that are in place. And there's some testing that's being done with those. And it was originally set aside to budget for this year to purchase. That testing is finishing up, but it's probably going to be after June 30th before those can be purchased. So essentially, what's happening is the transfer this fiscal year would go from Capital Outlay to the Capital Reserve Fund. And then next year, next fiscal year, when these are purchased, the funds would come back out of the Capital Reserve Fund and into Capital Outlay, so that purchase could take place, if that makes sense. So it's, it's not taking those out of the budget. It's just moving them in this current fiscal year so then it can be moved back next fiscal year just because of the delay of the purchase of those meters.
All righty. Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through D as presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this five oh. Now, citizen comments. Elaine Lotzenheimer.
I'm going to speak to you get to the budget hearing.
This is citizen comments before...
That's before the hearing.
All right. Are there any other citizen comments? Or are they all waiting till the budget? Okay. We'll go on to unfinished business, which is none new business. Consideration for requests for grant easement and... Consideration for requests for grant easement and portion of Carver Avenue lying on town property.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, uh, this came up when a property owner approached the town saying that his lawyer and of course the title search had discovered the fact that Carver Avenue runs a cer, a distance as a city street and then turns south into multiple properties. And they could find no easement for that last hundred and fifty feet or so over the town property to their properties for what is now Carver Easement or Carver Avenue. Uh, and when he brought that to the town, the town manager at that time took that information and asked me to bring it to the, this board, asking the board if they wanted to grant those people south of their property, Carver, uh, an easement, uh, for the street they've been using for fifty or sixty years. It's about a hundred and fifty feet. They've only asked, and we've gone through the grant that I've drafted is only eighteen feet wide. It's not designed to be a city street. They're not asking the town to take it over for a city street, but they would like to have legal access to their properties. And they've asked the town to grant them an easement in that last hundred and fifty feet or so of Carver Avenue that's private road.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt a resolution R- eighteen dash oh seven? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. To award legal services contract.
Uh, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to award legal services contract to Ronald D. Snead, PA.
Motion on the floor. Any, any discussion? Not hearing any, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. Recommendation number C for one-way travel on Sixth Street. Do we have any discussion on that?
In two thousand and fourteen, the town entered into an agreement with a development group called BQ Group in order to complete a section of Sixth Street that is currently closed, but is plotted and is the town's right-of-way. It's very short and about two-hundredish feet. Um, the town, the agreement was such that the town would pay for the drainage infrastructure that needed to be, um, installed. Um, this was the, the recommendation from the Army Corps of Engineers to solve some wetland problems in the area and that the developer would, um, be responsible for prepping the roadbed and then the town would pay for the roadbed. And now that they have, um, started to wrap up construction in the area, it is time to move forward. And that's the background information for our project. But the resolution for you tonight is to make Sixth Street become one-way. It's a very narrow road and having traffic move both ways for, on the, when it's completed will be very tight. And so we're one, we would like to go one-way from Montreat, uh, Montreat Road to Port Manavilla. And this has been reviewed by staff, public safety and fire. And we think that this resolves, um, a dangerous right-hand turn coming off of Sixth Street onto, um, Montreat Road. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Any discussion? Not hearing none. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution R-eighteen dash oh nine? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, a vote. Authorization number D for town attorney to open an investigation regarding censure proceedings. Any discussion?
I think it might be, uh, a good idea to ask Ron or an alderman if they want. I think the public might want a little explanation as to what, what we're doing here. Now, Ron, if you don't want.
Sure.
And I'm happy to, but I think, you know, you're, you're the one that is going to.
Okay, I'll be glad to give an introduction, since that's what it is. The, this board several years ago adopted a code of ethics. And that code of ethics not only addressed what an al, what an alderman might do and his role as alderman, but also how that alderman and act in the community might reflect on this board. And there has been an occurrence, uh, that at least some board members have indicated they feel is an action that might reflect on this board that needs to be dealt with in some way. The code of ethics only allows the board to censure. They can't fire another alderman, obviously, but they can make their, censure them, make their statement known. It's, it's not an approved action. However, the process doesn't just say, we decided to do that and it happens. The process says the town attorney will, it will be directed to investigate and determine if there's a reason for the board to find, uh, that there was such a violation of the code of ethics and to censure that alderman. Uh, the action before the, the board tonight is whether or not they think there's sufficient reason to direct me to, to institute that investigation and come back to them with my findings, but, but from which they can decide whether or not to censure an alderman.
Thank you, Ron, thank you.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to direct the town attorney to open an investigation regarding alderman Jeremy Kinnegney, pending criminal, is pending criminal charge, Bunkin County Docket Number eighteen C.R. eight-four-six-nine-oh, assault on a female? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. All right, appointments fill vacancies on town boards and commissions. The first one that we have is the ABC Board.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend Rick Harwood.
Have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. All right, Greenways Commission. We have three vacancies. Uh, we have two people applying for reappointment and then two folks that are, uh, applying for their first term.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Julia Weatherford.
I'd like to speak up, please.
Uh, I'm, I nominated Julia Weatherford.
Is this then for the, uh, first open term or reappointed? It's not, she can't be reappointed, so.
It's a, it's the open term.
Yeah, they're all open terms.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate, uh, Leslie Temple for reappointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Do I have any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Fred Rogan for, um, reappointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, Historic Preservation has two vacancies, three-year terms and one unexpired term ending, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Mayor, yeah, excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to nominate Elaine Lutzenheiser for the, um, for reappointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. Deborah Wooton applying, reapplying for an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Have a motion?
Salute.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. All right, Planning Board, we have three vacancies and we have two folks that are eligible for reappointment. Do I have any motions?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Willett.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. Another nomination. Motion for another one.
Uh, I'd like to nominate Shirley McReaney.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fails one-four. Do I have another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Lee Scott Reed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Another nomination.
I'd recommend, I'd like to nominate Pam Norton.
All in favor? How many has that through? Three. Any opposed? Okay. All right, Recreation Commission, two vacancies, three, two-year terms. We have two, there are, one that's applying for reappointment. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Daniel Bennett for reappointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five oh. Need another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Jerry Bryson.
Motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one vacancy, three applicants. Uh, we have one person reapplying for reappointment. Do I have a nomination or motion? Nomination and has motion.
I'd like to nominate Mara McClellan for a reappointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Zoning Board of the Justments. Uh, there's one regular term ending June thirtieth and a third alternate. You have five applicants, uh, for reappointment is Cheryl Milton. And then the other four consideration for the third alternate. Do I have a nomination?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Cheryl Milton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Uh, another nomination?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Charlotte McReaney for the third alternate position.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we'll go to the public hearing. Okay, the chair will recognize individuals questioned to address the board members with cut, regarding specific topic of the public hearing. Public hearing comments by any one speaker shall be limited to ten minutes. And first one up is Elaine Lutzenheiser. Do we? Motion open hearing?
Elaine Lutzenheiser, Fort Tenevina Road, Black Mountain. I'd like to have you address, I don't know what the budget has addressed, but I've talked to Jamie. And I feel like that we need to look at more than just power bill funds for road because there are several roads and he said he's, he's got somebody doing a priority and I'm willing to accept that. But there are several roads. I drive Paget Town Road to and from my home every day, several times a day. It's crumbling on the shoulders. Anybody that lives off of Paget Town Road can tell you that. And it's eroding in various places. I mean, the, uh, if I meet a dump truck, a garbage truck or a school bus, I want to pull in a driveway someplace and get off the road because there's hardly room for us and them. And they're legitimately on the road. The other one I'd like for you to look at and address is that road that goes into all those duplexes that Swanano Valley Ministry built for mothers with children that don't have any place to live. Those duplexes needed a road built before they built those duplexes. The road that's in there is dirt, it's not finished and it needs to have been done before they built them. Everybody was put out with the people that complained about them, but it wasn't that they were complaining about the buildings being built. It was the complaining that the road should have been done before the buildings were built. And I know that we look at power bill funds, but that should not be the only source of road building for this town. There should be funds in the budget to take care of roads that are crumbling. And I'm not familiar with all the other roads. I'm sure that a lot of people out here would have other roads that they'd like to recommend. But I, I want you all to drive up and down Paget Town and look at it. They were going to authorize, uh, uh, development above where Abena Road crosses Paget Town Road, which I wouldn't be involved in, but they had problems with that road before the development. As it turned out, the people that were going to build that development never could come to terms with what they wanted for the planning board to approve it. So they never built it. But I understand too that there's a sewer problem up there, that they need a sewer line strengthened before they even have the development. So before we approve developments, the roads ought to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the town council and to you. My name is Kim Latta. I'm on the board of Black Mountain Tennis Association. Back in April thirteenth, Black Mountain Tennis Association met with Matt Casey and Gary Whalen, a Whalen Court Construction, at the, uh, tennis courts up by the lake. Even though it was the middle of the day when most people were at work, but we had quite a crowd, about fifty strong. And we wanted to know what could be done to take better care of the courts. The Capital Improvement Plan from two thousand seven, that's eleven years ago, had the architectural drawing of a six-court complex below the lake on Craigmont. And we had a bathroom and a fountain and some form of shelter included in that. We asked at the meeting at the clubhouse with the architects in two thousand seven that, uh, and again, on this meeting in April with the courts, we asked the same thing. We want to keep the two courts at the lake. And we want to have a four-court complex, not a six, down below the lake. The BMTA has many USTA, United States Tennis Association teams and they compete on these courts. Now these courts have one-inch cracks and smaller cracks, a half-inch and smaller, running through the courts. It's an embarrassment to have outsiders come and play tournaments on these courts. So after matches, they visit downtown Black Mountain. They dine, they shop, so forth. And many have said that they've come back with friends and families to our town and parks after being introduced through the matches we have. Black Mountain Tennis Association helps maintain these courts. And we split the cost with the Black Mountains Recs and Parks, sometimes called Parks and Recs. Either way. And we get such items such as nets, rollers, brushes, other court equipment. We split the cost with. We split the cost with Black Mountain Parks and Racks. We remove grass, keep the place tidy. Remove dog poop when necessary, some people can't read. And we also keep the weeds and the grass out of the cracks. Furthermore, we donate financially to school tennis teams and present a $1,000 college scholarship in the spring and in the fall to Owen High School and the Owen High School student from the men's and the women's teams. Our requests are, take temporary measures to fix the cracks. It was decided that Racks and Parks would purchase the materials and Black Mountain Tennis Association volunteers would fill the cracks. We hope to get on this pretty soon. Long-term measures. Gary Whalen spoke of how the upper courts could somewhat be raised to fix the water table problem. By raising the courts helped prevent a lot of the cracks that are occurring on the courts. For the two upper courts, the cost is, including time, $115,000. Black Mountain Tennis Association, about 150 strong. And even though our members pay only $30 a year for membership, they volunteer for our clinics, our camps, and our other events. And from those events, the Black Mountain Tennis Association profits. We also get monies from the United States, United States Tennis Association. And our, excuse me, and are currently, our nonprofit association has saved $15,000, which we would use to help with construction. After receiving a USTA grant to repair the courts about five years ago, that didn't work out too well, as far as the repair goes, I feel that another grant would be approved. The remaining part would have to be appropriated from the town. We asked for a three-to-five-year window of time to complete the project, as well as having a four-court complex down across, on Craigmont to follow, hopefully in the next one to three years. Seems a lot of new things are going on in Black Mountain, which is a good thing, but help us to keep the properties that we have maintained. Matt said that the board meeting was sometime soon after our meeting on the courts, that he would share all of this with you. It appears he did not. We want to help. Consider looking at the plans, see if there's any way to make this happen in the very near future. Thank you for your time. Any questions? I didn't expect a ovulation.
Motion to open the public hearing. Okay. Motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the budget ordinance, oh eighteen dash oh two.
I think, Justin, you going to give a little, a brief summary just yet?
Sure, just, just kind of a, just a brief overview of the budget. And y'all have seen this several times during the agenda meetings, the budget workshops. In terms of the numbers, really nothing's changed in here. Just a quick recap. Total budget is approximately 11.2 million. That includes all the funds and capital improvements, capital outlay that's included. One thing that I will point out, or actually two things, and I know just from observing from afar, that the, the town has really concentrated over the past several years on two areas. Building the fund balance, which is very important for, for towns your size, and reducing the amount of debt. And I'll just point, I'm not going to go into the details, but if you'll look at the budget message, Dean has included those numbers in there to show the progress that has been made in those two areas. And, and you know, I think that knowing that those were priorities along with all other capital improvements that have gone on. And this budget continues that trend, both in terms of making sure that rainy day funds available, but also reducing, reducing the, the amount of debt service the town is paying. Just in, in terms of the specific ordinance, the, the recommended budget ordinance is included in your packet with one exception that I would make. And this, the, the paper that was, that I handed out earlier in the meeting at the top, it says section four. And that changes some wording, and I'll, I'll just read this. So probably what can happen, if it's the board's pleasure to adopt the budget ordinance or an amended ordinance, what, what I would recommend is that the ordinance is presented, be adopted with the following change or the following amendment to section four. It says appropriations are authorized by department totals. The finance officers authorized to reallocate departmental appropriations among various line item, objects of expenditures, and revenues as necessary during the budget year. That's always been part of your budget ordinance. What's being added is however, actual changes to salary or compensation of any employee for any reason, except for the cost of living amounts approved in this document, shall be approved by the board of aldermen before such change takes effect. So that, that would be, and then once the, the final budget document and budget ordinance is printed, obviously we would include this language in any of the formal documents.
Sounds good. And I, I would also, just for the sake of the folks in the public that are here, some of the highlights of the budget were that improvements in the communication system for the police department, water quality improvements in accordance with the Swanano River watershed plan, phase one for the, for Highway Nine sidewalk that would run on out to the town limits on, on number nine. Isn't that right?
That's right.
Yep. And phase two, design and construction of Riverwalk Greenway, and that's connecting all the greenway pieces together. Finalizing agreement to take over water lines, which I mentioned earlier, and continued focus on, on the physical responsible management at the golf course, which has been going very well. And up to a 3% cost of living adjustment for all our employees. So just a few highlights there. But Mr. Mayor, I would then make a motion that we adopt the budget as presented with the amendment to section four that, that Justin just pointed out and read to us.
Have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five oh. Alrighty, communication from staff, Ron.
Nothing new for the town. This is sort of on the tail end of your budget discussion though. Justin and Dean and I both men, pointed out or noted the fact that the amendment you just made to the budget ordinance that sort of controls how raises are given, it's only a part of this one-year budget ordinance. So at some point, you want to toss this to staff to write it into your personnel ordinance, so it's always there, not just in this one-year ordinance.
I think it's a great idea, and I, I think it would be a very appropriate time to take a look at the personnel manual and just take a review. And, and also just to make sure that the board understands the pay, pay arrangement for our employees that's incorporated in that personnel policy. Good time to do that, maybe that'd be a workshop topic at some point in time, I don't know if you did it. If that's any agreeable about?
Justin?
Just real quickly, I've enjoyed being here the, I don't know, what's it been, three weeks, I guess? I've had some short tenures as a manager before, but never quite that short. But in, in all seriousness, I, I've enjoyed being here and I think the presentation Jamie gave, and then I have included, I think y'all got it last week, but a, a really detailed report provided by the fire chief and the fire department in terms of all the activities associated with that, along with the police department, really all the employees of the town. When, when the flooding happened and that was going on, I think they, they should be commended for the way that, 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 that worked. You know, it was just, they're, they're credit to public service everywhere. And that, that became obvious to me, being the first week I was here, that the quality of employees and the quality of folks around town staff and the way that all the departments were pulling together to do that.
Communication from the board.
I'd just like to thank Justin, I think we all do, stepping in and helping us. It's, we very much appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up real quick. One, I'd like to thank this board for supporting me in my recommendation for Kenny Capps. Kenny has gone through a lot, he and his family, and he's on a good place right now in his life. To be able to run over a thousand miles the way he did in 53 days says a lot about you, especially after you've been diagnosed basically with a terminal illness. So again, thank you for your support and what we did. Looking at a couple of comments that were made by Ms. Lutzenheiser for one. I know some of the roads in town, they're not all town streets, they're not all town roads. But I would kind of, you know, ask that maybe Jamie and his crew, if we can identify areas that are designated, you know, town streets or ones that are state-maintained roads, in some kind of way, have some kind of determination as to how we can look for funding for those. As far as the tennis association goes, no, I was not privy to the information, to the meeting that was done, that was held with the previous town manager. Didn't know about that information, I think maybe a lot of us didn't. But what I would ask is that the town staff now, if they were able to meet with Judy, are you here, Mr. Eubanks? She and her folks, and see what can be done, what kind of remedies that could be made. And you know, if, if it comes to a thing of a budget adjustment, amendment somewhere down the road, that we may have to look at that to try to help, give these folks the help that they need. And if, if that could be brought to us by the August meeting, I'm not sure if that would be too long or too late. I'm not sure what your schedule is there, how, how your play goes. But anything we can kind of do to try to help these folks out. And just referring back to the budget, we did not raise taxes again this year, folks. We're in a good spot. A lot is to be said to this board. We have been being good stewards to the town's money. There are lots of things happening in town, lots of good things that we're working on, and we're going to keep on working on them. Because the ultimate objective is to make Black Mountain the kind of town where everybody wants to live. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a, a couple of things real quick, Mr. Mayor. Want to, I want to join Alderman Harrison thanking Justin for helping us these last three weeks and for his continued support as we move forward in our manager search. In relation to that, we'll have a meeting here Monday, June 21st at 8:30. The North Carolina League of Municipalities will be giving us a presentation about how we can conduct the search for our full-time manager. That will be open and available for anyone that wishes to attend. This coming Thursday, June 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Lakeview Center, NCDOT, will be here doing an infrastructure prioritization meeting for the, for Division 13, which includes all of Buncombe County. They'll be discussing projects like the Blue Ridge Interchange. So public comment is welcome at that, and we encourage everyone to attend. And lastly, I'd also like to thank publicly Chief Jones and the Fire Department, and Chief Freeman and the Police Department for all their hard work during the, during the emergency events and the flooding, and getting out there. And Chief Jones, I look forward to your report where you'll tell us about how, how you guys were able to help everyone at the care facility, save their medications and get them out of that building when the water was rising. We appreciate everything you guys do and are fortunate to have you, thank you.
All I can do is echo the, those remarks. Our town staff and those guys have said before at the beginning of the meeting, they're just incredible when it comes to doing their job and doing it the way that they do. And I'm talking about police, fire, public works, everybody in City Hall, everybody did, did their, their part. And I just want to remind and repeat, if some of you aren't here at the beginning of the meeting, that Mr. Ron Moore, former district attorney in the Buncombe County, next Monday will be our new interim town manager. And we look forward to, to working with him and using his leadership and to, uh, working in the, in government. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of things that we can glean from him and that maybe he can help us with. And we look forward to that relationship as we continue our search for a full-time town manager. Anything else? Not hearing anything, meeting adjourned.